Thank you for all coming. We're going to start our meeting at this time. Today is Monday, March 4th, and we're going to start with the Controller's office. Come on up. Thank you for having a seat.
Okay.
Is that working, that microphone?
I can yell loud, don't worry.
All right. All right. Well, let everybody get ready. These have been going pretty quick, so see what happens.
Page 23.
Yeah.
Page 23.
Yeah.
42 actually.
I guess we'll start with the first word and go around.
Can we do like a debrief thing? I like how we did it last time where they give a little...
Yep, and yeah, go ahead and introduce yourself, tell us a little about what you plan on doing this year and...
I am Diana Corey. I'm the Deputy Controller, also kind of acting as the interim Budget Director, and doing some healthcare stuff too, which has been a great time. Basically, our budget is pretty much the same. We had asked for an extra accountant because I do have part-time people, which has been a little difficult, but Mayor took it out, so we will deal with what we have. So our salary lines really didn't go up maybe 1 percent. That's including 3 percent for all the CSEA, which the majority are CSEA. And other than that, nothing really went up other than my financial statement audit because it has gone up in years past. Contracted services have gone up a little bit. Everything else is pretty much the same. So any questions? Shoot.
We'll start with Katie and then work her way around.
One of the questions I did have was on redemptions. What are examples of that? That is one of the lines that did go up.
It's the redemptions, the tax redemptions, so they send out.
So it went up from, I just noticed it was a, I guess we've hit 5,500 before in the past. That's what it used to be budgeted for.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I mean, it's the postage, the handling, all of that.
And then the new...
And the fees, whatever associated with that. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry. I was also looking at with the salaries for the positions. Part-time Deputy Controller, part-time Senior Payroll Clerk. Can you explain like how that benefits? What's why that organization's structured now?
Well, right, we used to have a full-time auditor and we, she retired, but she's graciously staying on because I need her. Same with the Payroll Clerk. She has retired, but she's staying on. So they work an average of 15 to 20 hours a week. And same with the Deputy Controller. He basically came back to help me, especially with the budget issues, and he's helping me clean up a few accounts and things like that. So that's all for me.
Buck?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question. I see there's quite a bump for the statement. Now, do you pay for the financial statement audit?
It comes out of, yeah, it does come out of our budget.
That comes out of your...
And it has gone up in years.
Now, that's an outside auditor.
Correct. It's, Bonadale has been doing it for the last eight, nine years. There's also some new requirements regarding leases, so that was an extra bump that we had to pay them, and that's something that's going to be done every year. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you all set?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, thanks for coming in. Could you speak a bit to the software that's currently used at the office?
Software, Munis is our general ledger system, and we also pay for Cronos, which is where everybody punches.
Timekeeping software.
Correct. So, and of course, everything just keeps going up.
That's what I was going to ask. Is there a percentage increase on both? Just a ballpark, I suppose?
You know, I'm not sure of the percentage, to be totally honest with you. I just know that it's gone up. It's nothing usually too great, but it just keeps going up, and we are responsible for all of it. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm all set.
Liz?
Just one thing. The increased salaries are for the two other positions that are added on here, right?
Which two other?
You have the Payroll Clerk and the Deputy Controller.
The Payroll...
Those are on, those are on the back page, the back for their salaries.
Yes. My boss wanted to bump my salary up because I am holding...
No, that's, I just, I just want to know, I want to put the two numbers together. That's all I'm asking. That's what it's got to be because last year they were zeros and now they're 35. Okay. I'm good.
Okay.
Diana, I just, you know, I want to say throughout, I know that last year you were kind of doing both jobs between Budget Director and through your work for the Controller's Office. So I do want to thank you for that. I know it got a little crazy towards the end of the year with trying to get our...
Yes, very crazy.
Yeah, it is. And I think that that's, you know, for us not having a Budget Director, I think it's pretty difficult to go through these meetings and kind of try and, you know, understand and grasp really what's going on. With that said, and obviously I don't want to put this on you, your, you know, Department Head is Bill Morehouse, and I understand, and I kind of wish Bill was here because I would have liked to ask him some questions.
He's got some family, there's some family stuff going on there.
So that's why I don't want to belabor you on some of those issues that I had. So, but I did want to thank you for taking that time out throughout.
Thank you. You got any questions, though? Seriously.
I did, and I will. I've got, I've got some of them. I will.
Come and see us. We're here. Mike and I are both there every day. So...
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you as well. I appreciate the time you spent with me working and trying to figure out some of the issues that we had here and everything. And keep up the good work.
Can I actually ask one more question?
Oh, we got one, we got one.
I'm sorry. You were great at explaining to me the other day of just the kind of the cost, this isn't for the Controller's Department necessarily, but just the cost of healthcare and retirement. Can you pitch what you pitched to me?
Okay. Well, retirement comes directly from, we get an estimate from New York State every year, and the police and fire, it's separate. So you've got just regular ERS, which is all the employees' retirement, and then you have PFRS, which is police and fire. They, police and fire went up over 21 percent. ERS went up over 16 percent. So we're looking at over a $10 million payment that we make in December. I try to make it early because we get a little bit of a percentage, like, you know, a couple...
Well, when did it go up last year? Is it always a...
Um, no. It did go up quite a bit this year. It depends. It fluctuates. It, you know, has to do with whatever salaries are paid out. And when you have, like, for instance, you know, the fire got a nice, finally settled their, their contract, and they all got retro payments. So that all goes in there. So we have to pay retirement on all of that. So it's an estimate, but I don't know if it's going to go up. I don't know if it's going to go down.
But those numbers come from the state.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah. As a matter of fact, I think I sent the backup to the mayor. I don't know if he passed it on to you guys. But in healthcare, we were advised by our brokers to up at 10 percent. So, and it's already up a little bit from last year about, I think she said like 7, 8 percent from last year usage. So there's really, again, not much we can do about that either. So...
Just one of those, tell me.
Sure.
So I guess then that goes back to the question they have. So we have two budget amendments proposed for the police and fire retirements, which takes out about $250,000 out of each of those accounts.
Out of the retirement.
Out of the retirement. So what is your suggestion? Have you, did you, were you okay with that, those amendments, or...
Well, I mean, it's, you guys, you know, it's up to you if that's what you want to do. I mean, but the problem is, is if that comes in, that estimate comes in as is, we have to pay it no matter what. I like to pay it early because we do get a little bit of a discount.
Has our, has our revenue ever been down like $250,000, or the estimated and anticipated amount to be paid ever been down like $250,000?
It fluctuates. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down, and I'm praying it goes down. That would be great.
But those are the numbers that they give you.
But that's what I got from the state, so that's what I've had to present. Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Anybody else?
Anyone, anyone else? Any last question?
Yeah.
That's what Vtech.
Just to clarify, when we're talking about retirement versus hospital and medical, I just want to clarify that. So in terms of hospital and medical, is that the 10 percent increase that was recommended by the firm?
Right. And that's going to be in your 803 line? You'll see 803 on the...
Correct.
Towards the bottom there, yes. So that's just hospital because we're self-insured. So that's what we're paying.
Based on your experience since we've been self-insured, has that percentage increase been the same?
We weren't helping their self-insure. It would have been a lot more. The percentage, I think, was supposed to be about 18 percent or something like that. It was going to be some ridiculous amount.
And the recommendation was 10 percent increase?
That is what brokers and around that funding services recommend.
Okay. And just wanted to clarify, when we speak of hospital and medical versus retirement, which is line 801. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thanks. Anybody else?
Anyone else? Anyone else? Any last question?
Yeah. Hi.
That's what Vtech.
Just to clarify, when we're talking about retirement versus hospital and medical, I just want to clarify that. So in terms of hospital and medical, is that the 10 percent increase that was recommended by the firm?
Right. And that's going to be in your 803 line? You'll see 803 on the...
Correct.
Towards the bottom there, yes. So that's just hospital because we're self-insured. So that's what we're paying.
Based on your experience since we've been self-insured, has that percentage increase been the same?
We weren't helping their self-insure. It would have been a lot more. The percentage, I think, was supposed to be about 18 percent or something like that. It was going to be some ridiculous amount.
And the recommendation was 10 percent increase?
That is what brokers and around that funding services recommend.
Okay. And just wanted to clarify, when we speak of hospital and medical versus retirement, which is line 801.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Sure. Anybody else?
Any last minute? One, two, three, you're out.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Next one will be Engineering.
Nobody here that don't have a permit?
Nobody from Engineering here?
No.
It would technically be mine. All right, Mayor. Do you have your DPW? Yeah? Do you have your DPW?
Yeah.
Basically, our budget is pretty much the same. We had asked for an extra accountant because I do have part-time people, which has been a little difficult, but Mayor took it out, so we will deal with what we have. So our salary lines really didn't go up maybe 1%. That's including 3% for all the CSEA, which the majority are CSEA. And other than that, nothing really went up, other than my financial statement audit, because it has gone up in years past. Contracted services have gone up a little bit. Everything else is pretty much the same. So, any questions?
We'll start with Katie and then work her way around.
One of the questions I did have was on redemptions. What are examples of that? That is one of the lines that did go up.
That's the redemptions, the tax redemptions, so they send out.
So it went up from, I just noticed it was a, I guess we've hit 5,500 before in the past. That's what it used to be budgeted for.
Yeah, that's usually, yeah. I mean, it's the postage, the handling, all of that.
And then the new-
And the fees, whatever associated with that. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't mean to call you off. I'm sorry. I was also looking at with the salaries for the positions, part-time deputy comptroller, part-time senior payroll clerk. Can you explain like how that benefits? What's, why that organization structure now?
Well, right, we used to have a full-time auditor and we, she retired, but she's graciously staying on because I need her. Same with the payroll clerk. She has retired, but she's staying on. So they work an average of 15 to 20 hours a week. And same with the deputy comptroller. He basically came back to help me, especially with the budget issues, and he's helping me clean up a few accounts and things like that. So.
That's all for me.
Okay. Buck?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I, I just have one question. I see there's quite a bump for the, the statement. Now, do you pay for the financial statement audit?
It comes out of, yeah, it does come out of our, our budget.
That comes out of your-
And it has gone up in years.
Now, that's an outside auditor.
Correct. It's, Bonadeo has been doing it for the last eight, nine years. There's also some new requirements regarding leases, so that was an extra bump that we had to pay them, and that's something that's going to be done every year. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you all set?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, thanks for coming in. Could you speak a bit to the software that's currently used at the office?
Software, Munis is our, our general ledger system, and we also pay for Kronos, which is where everybody punches.
Timekeeping software.
Correct. So, and of course, everything just keeps going up.
That's what I was gonna ask. Is there a percentage increase on both? Just a ballpark, I suppose?
You know, I'm not sure of the percentage, to be totally honest with you. I just know that it's, it's gone up. It's nothing usually too great, but it's, just keeps going up, and we are responsible for all of it. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm all set.
Wes?
Just one thing. The increased salaries are for the two other positions that are added on here, right?
Which two other?
You have the payroll clerk and the deputy comptroller.
The payroll clerk.
Those are on, those are on, on the back page, the back for their salaries.
Yes. My boss wanted to bump my salary up because I am holding.
No, that's what, I just, I just wanna know, I wanna put the two numbers together. That's all I'm asking. That's what it's gotta be, because last year they were zeros and now they're thirty-five. Okay. I'm good.
Okay.
Dana, I, I just, you know, I want to say throughout, I know the last year you were kinda doing both jobs between budget director and through your work for the comptroller's office. So I, I do wanna thank you for, for that.
Thank you.
I know it got a little crazy towards the end of the year with trying to get our-
It's very crazy.
Yeah, it is. And I, and I, and I think that that's, you know, for us not having a budget director, I think it's pretty difficult to go through these meetings and kinda try and, you know, understand and grasp really what's going on. With that said, and I, and obviously, I don't wanna put this on you. Your, your, you know, department head is Bill Morehouse, and I understand, and I kinda wish Bill was here, because I would've liked to-
He's got some family. There's some family stuff going on there.
Ask him some questions. So, I understand. But, so that's why I don't wanna belabor you on, on some of those issues that I had. So, but I did wanna thank you for taking that time out throughout, Dana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got any questions, though? Seriously, Sam.
I did, and I, and I will. I've got, I've got some of them. I will.
Come and see us. We're, we're here. Mike and I are both there every day. So.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you as well. I appreciate the time you spent with me working and trying to figure out some of the issues that we had here and everything. And keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Can I actually ask one more question?
Oh, we got one, we got one.
I'm sorry. You were great at explaining to me the other day of just, the kind of the cost, this isn't for the comptroller's department necessarily, but just the cost of healthcare and retirement. Can you pitch what you pitched to me?
Okay. Well, retirement comes directly from, we get an estimate from New York State every year. And the police and fire, it's separate. So you've got just regular ERS, which is all the employees' retirement, and then you have PFRS, which is police and fire. They, police and fire went up over 21%. ERS went up over 16%. So we're looking at over a $10 million payment that we make in December. I try to make it early because we get a little bit of a percentage, like, you know, a couple, maybe thousands.
What did it go up last year? Is it always a secret?
Um, no. It, it did go up quite a bit this year. It depends. It fluctuates. It, you know, it has to do with whatever salaries are, are paid out. And when you have, like, for instance, you know, the, the fire got a nice, finally settled their, their contract, and they all got retro payments. So that all goes in there. So we have to pay retirement on all of that. So, it's an estimate, but I don't know if it's gonna go up, or I don't know if it's gonna go down.
But those numbers come from the state, and that's-
Yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah. Matter of fact, I think I sent the backup to the mayor. I don't know if he passed it on to you guys. But in healthcare, we were advised by our brokers to up at 10%. So, and it's already up a little bit from last year, about, I think she said like 7, 8% from last year usage.
Right.
So, there's really, again, not much we can do about that either. So.
Just wanted to add, I was talking.
Sure.
So, so I guess then that goes back to the question they have. So we have two budget amendments proposed for the police and fire retirements, which takes out about $250,000 out of each of those accounts.
Out of the retirement?
Out of the retirement. So what is your suggestion? Have you, did you, were you okay with that, those amendments, or?
Well, I mean, it's, you guys, you know, you, it's, it's up to you if that's what you wanna do. I mean, but the problem is, is if that comes in, that estimate comes in as-is, we have to pay it no matter what. I like to pay it early because we do get a little bit of a discount.
Has our, has our revenue ever been down like $250,000, or the estimated and anticipated amount to be paid ever been down like $250,000?
It fluctuates. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. And I'm praying it goes down. That would be great.
But those are the numbers that, that's what they give you.
But that's what I got from the state, so that's what I've had to present. Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Anybody else?
Anyone, anyone else? Any last question?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
That's from B-Tech. Just to clarify, when we're talking about retirement versus hospital and medical, I just wanna clarify that. So in terms of hospital and medical, is that the 10% increase that was recommended by the firm?
Right. And that's gonna be in your 803 line? You'll see 803 on the, you know, towards the bottom there, yes. So that's just hospital, because we're self-insured. So that's what we're paying.
Based on your experience since we've been health, uh, self-insured, has that percentage increase been the same, or is the 10% been?
We weren't helping their self-insure. It would've been a lot more. The percentage, I think, was supposed to be about 18% or something like that. It was gonna be some ridiculous amount.
And the, the recommendation was 10% increase? I just wanna-
That is what brokers and around that funding services recommend.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify, when we speak of hospital and medical versus retirement, which is line 801?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Sure. Anybody else?
Any last minute? One, two, three, you're out.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Next one will be engineering.
Nobody here that don't have a permit?
Nobody from engineering here?
No.
It would technically be mine. All right, Mayor. Do you need a DPW? Yeah?
Hmm?
Do you need a DPW?
Yeah. So you ready? Yeah, the engineering's not here. Engineering's not here. You got the same book I got, John? No, the one he put, he did for us. No, I got it everywhere in October. Okay. We didn't ask for very many increases.
No.
Really just, uh, yeah, 38 and 77.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, yeah.
Would you have?
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
Yeah. Okay. So, when you wanna do it?
March, so that's one.
Yeah, I'm just looking. I'm looking when it gets to, okay. The Mar, uh, March 5th. We'll have to do it on March 5th, right?
March 5th.
Yeah, you put your March 5th, if I can. Yeah. All right. You sure? All right, we're even. I guess the mayor's gonna do engineering for tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. All right, uh, let, let Sam go.
Who are we starting with? Thirty-five? Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, you're gonna say? Okay.
What's that? She, she was at Hong Kong.
Oh, okay. Yeah, wait a minute.
Yes, sir.
I was out in Valdez today, and I saw three guys cleaning up Lenox Sands all the way up.
Jack, you said the-
I believe it's, um, beautiful. Shire went all the way down to the court.
I'm aware.
Were they part of your department?
Uh, that was part of Pastor Bolman's crew.
Was it really?
Yes, sir.
He did North Dakota the other day, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
They did a nice job, the three guys.
Yeah, they did.
They did a nice job.
Now, who picked up them plastic garbage bags?
We do.
The city will.
The city will.
Yep. DPW will.
Because there was a lot of garbage.
Every spring, it's-
I just couldn't believe that they, the three guys took the bit, which-
Yeah.
But I mean, they would-
They go right along.
Poodle school.
All right. Are we ready to start? All right, Dave, you got it.
Yes, sir.
Give us your little synopsis here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dave Short. I'm the commissioner of Public Works and the Parks Department. To the right is Mark Sokolowski, who is my deputy commissioner. And to my left is John Skaglion, who is my office manager. He's the book guy, oh, the accounts guy. Basically, some of our biggest asks this year is for salt, and also our repair line at DPW, uh, DPW, and then also our contracted services at the Parks Department. That is for our seasonal labors. They supplement the union guys at the Parks Department. And that's usually from April, mid-April to early December. Those are the guys that do all the trim work, additional litter work, endless. They do, they do codes abatements, they do urban renewal properties. So it's, it's a lot. And just, just so everybody's on the same page here, the Parks Department also dubs as the caretaker for the Urban Renewal Agency and the Codes, Codes Department to do all their abatements. We, we took that over probably, I don't know, 15 years ago or so. So that department is well tasked with what they have to do every, every day. Any questions?
Yeah, we'll start right from, from Katie, and we'll call out.
Hi. Yep. So the first one, I was looking at, uh-
Hey, guys. Quick question. Jack called me about the engineering department. If we could do this, it would be great. You guys could meet amongst yourselves, come up with any questions you have for the engineering department, provide those to my office in written form, and then I'll get answers to those questions in detail from the engineers. Otherwise, it's gonna be, you know, because there is no department head. I worked it done to put the budget together. If you have any specific questions about those lines, I'll make sure they're answered in detail and bring it to the whole house. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only line I really had a question with was under, uh, other equipment for DPW Central Garage. I saw we've been budgeted for $20,000 in the past. I was curious what the $40,000 jump was and what that gets us, and what you're looking to do with it.
What, what line you talking about?
It is-
1640-202?
Uh, 51-640-202. Yes.
Okay. That's what we use to purchase our cutting edges for our plows, and if we need a front end for a big plow. So every other year, we usually have to get an increase in cutting edges, and probably this is the year that we have to resupply.
Great. Thank you. That helps. I'm all set.
You have a big rewind there on that. Where'd you get that from?
Uh, that, I went to DPW Central Garage. I don't have the page in front of me. I'm sorry.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Right. I'm not a go-work kind of CAF, not really.
202 for other equipment?
Two oh two, okay. I got you.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm all set, Chairman.
I, I basically don't have any questions, but do you have a lot of men out on disability? No? Nobody?
We have, we have one person out on compensation right now. That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Hi. Could you speak a bit more to the other equipment costs associated with, uh, cutting edges? How they've increased?
Steel has went up significantly since COVID. So, from our last order to what our next order will be, it's probably 30 to 35% increase. Also, at some point, we're gonna need a, a new front end for one of our snow plows, which ranges around $30,000. We're holding off on doing that right now. But the materials have increased dramatically since COVID.
Can you talk about quantity of cutting edges the department's looking to purchase coming up here in this next fiscal year?
Um, we haven't done our, our count yet, but usually when we do it, it's 50 or 70 front end and maybe 25 wing, wing cutting edges.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing, nothing else. Thanks again for coming in.
Are you gonna need a lot, a lot of extra people to take care of all these new parks?
Yeah.
I mean, you got a lot of new parks now, so, I mean, they need maintenance, right? Well, he, you had three seasonal helpers or four last year for the-
We, we had four seasonals last year.
And the mayor put in for three additional more to have seven.
Perfect. So he, so he accounted for that.
Yeah. With, with the parks, it's the same, basically the same parks, but now we've added different amenities that require a lot more maintenance now.
Right. That's what I meant.
Yes, sir.
We spent $25 million on parks.
Plus, minimum wage went up, too.
Yes.
All right.
Um, so last time I talked to you, you were, you were looking for a mechanic. Did you get a mechanic for, uh, DPW?
At DPW?
Yeah.
We, we found a mechanic. Uh, we'll, we'll see how long that goes for. Uh, we had one before, and then he left.
Yeah.
So it, it's a tough, tough fight.
And how's it going with the agreement we made, um, with Pike to restore Johnson Park after the construction is all done?
As far as I know, that's still, still the agreement. Uh, I would say early, probably early spring, mid-spring, they should be clearing out. And they're supposed to go in there and do total restoration of the park.
Are they the ones that put, um, entry things over the sidewalk?
They put, some of those they put back up.
They put, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's different poles. Do you, do you know if they plan on putting a new pole on the other end, or just leaving it the same?
That I'm not sure of.
Yeah. It looks nice, though.
It's, it's getting there. As soon as they get the trailers off the, the park, it'll look a lot better.
The only thing I was worried about is, um, after they restored the park, uh, when John, when Reverend Myers has her, um, food giveaway, there's still people, right now they're still parking in the park.
Yeah.
Because they saw the construction workers doing it.
Yeah.
So.
That's something that we'll have to enforce.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm good. I don't have anything. You don't have enough salt, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mark, did anybody, did, did they hire anybody for the sign shop to help you out, or what's the? I'm not involved with that anymore, but he does have two or three guys doing it as, as, as they need it. So, is there, did they hire somebody full-time for that slot, or is it just?
No. No. We got, we'll wait till April when the rebid starts, or when the rebid takes effect, the new titles. We'll put it out to, we'll put it out there again to see if anybody wants to do it. But right now, we're, we're handling it with several different people. We have an installer during the day, and at night, we have guys that can make the signs and cut them out. So it's, it's working.
I got a quick question. Dave, uh, how many guys do you, do you have?
So Parks Department has 18 full-timers. Um, uh, DPW right now has 40.
We have 47 spots.
We have 47 spots in the budget, but I think we're only at 40.
Four.
Four.
How many do you have? How many did you have at one time?
At what department?
When I started.
Yeah, when you started.
When I started 28 years ago, there was 99 guys. Square mileage of the city shrink? No, it stayed the same. Okay.
Yeah. Just one question. Back to the sign shop, do you foresee somebody bidding on that and taking it over?
We'll figure it out. Uh, we have two people that may be interested.
But is, is that something that's odd? It's like, uh, go by seniority, they have to get it if they have it, or is it?
Yeah. I mean, you have to be capable of doing the job no matter what.
Yeah.
All right. Any last minute questions before we, well, finish up here? Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you.
Nothing on parks?
I think it's, it's up to plan, I think.
I will ask one question. What are the, how does it look for, I know, uh, one thing Mayor Bellamy always talked about is our summer help. We wait till April or May to start hiring it, when we should be starting, well, we are in April now, but we should have, we started before. Are we on the pace where we were last year, or are we ahead of the game on that, or?
It all depends on the budget now. Whatever comes back, then we can-
Yeah. From the list I saw, one of the budget amendment, amendments was to eliminate all of them. So that's something you guys gotta figure out.
I mean, that's why, that's why we start in April, because we don't know where we stand before that.
Right. But even, even last year when we started, and you had, we were able to hire all the help?
Yeah, but we outsourced the Parks Department as well.
Last year we did. Right. I do understand that. But I know when we, you had, we had a problem hiring summer help last year.
We have a problem hiring help, period.
Yeah.
Right.
The work ethic just isn't there anymore than anybody. It's very hard.
And, and I know it actually, and I should've brought it up before, too, by, because of that short staff, we had to hire outside contractors to do a lot of the cutting and stuff like that, which cost us quite a bit of money, correct?
We were working with a contractor at that time that was able to help us with some of our shortcomings.
Right.
Um, whether or not that service will be available again this year, I don't know.
Right. So we, we need to get those summer people in to-
It helps.
Make sure we don't have to do that. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Could you speak a bit to contracted services under Parks Maintenance? Is that what you're referring to, contracting out? Okay. Uh, what is, what does that typically look like in terms of, uh, in terms of timeline for, I won't say farming out, but, you know, hiring, um, the outside help and?
It all depends on April with the, with the budget.
How about, uh, for an example of last year? How did-
We had three last year. Four.
Four.
Four last year.
Four just through contact, contracted services?
We added three more for this year, for the summer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think just want to reiterate, that goes back to the fact that Parks does codes.
Urban renewal.
Urban renewal.
Ice skating rink now.
Ice skating rink now.
Lots of parks.
I mean, I mean, there's, so there's not just more than just parks. I mean, there's obviously more that they do. And I think what they do, outsource 200 properties last year and had it, you know, had to charge somebody, because obviously, we had to maintain a majority of what we had.
Right. We, we had over 400 city lots, uh, that we just couldn't get to. There's only so many operators that our department has, and between keeping the Parkway mode and Procti Park mode, it just, it's very hard to get to these lots. The priority, it's a priority thing.
Okay. Thank you.
You have applicables. It's already in the case. Is it okay to hire them? So get them right away? It's job ready, right?
Yeah. We, we go through, uh, express services. We have several people from last year that would like to come back. That's something that we'll review before that. And then they have a few people on, on record that they would like to come with the Parks Department.
So they're ready to go if you get them through?
Yes. It's just a matter of a phone call, and we can get them started.
Good.
That's why we switched over to them before. We had to hire them all out and go through all the city, you know, hiring. It was just too long. And we're not responsible for Workman's Comp at that point. The, the services, not us.
Sorry. A couple more question, questions based on Councilman Caricon's questions. So with contracted services with the, uh, let's say fiscal year '23, I believe it was $165,000. How many, you were able to hire three to four additional workers, you'd said with that? Did I get that right or no?
Yeah. I think we had four seasonal labors.
Okay. And with the, uh, speaking of seasonal employment with that line, with the $130,000 requested, did I, did I hear that that would be another four?
It would be three.
Three. Okay. So three with that, and then three to four with the contracted services?
It would be total of seven.
Total of seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a preference in the department on contracted services versus seasonal employment in allocating, uh, one side or the other of that?
No.
I guess I'll clarify. So, um, so the $145,000 for contracted services that was requested, if you were to add the $130,000 of seasonal employment to that for the same total, is it preferable to be-
Are you talking 106 or 103?
Yeah. I'll clarify. I apologize. So-
Or 441.
441 for contracted services, as well as 44106 for seasonal. If we're talking the same total as requested, is there a preference that the full total be in?
I think, I think what you have to clarify, too, is if you're able to use your Parks Maintenance employees for, for the additional park resources, too, not just for mowing the lawns as well, for urban renewal and-
Sure. I guess so-
Does that make sense?
So what I'm getting at is, we're talking about the same total between contracted services?
But also doing that, you see, he cut overtime in that for 15,002 and 102 with the wage, with the wages, or the overtime, 103.
I guess what I'm asking in a roundabout way is, would the department prefer to have, if we're talking about the same total?
Right.
Would you have the, the same total in contracted services, or the total in seasonal employment? Or is there no difference?
There is really no difference.
Okay. That's all.
But the contracted service, you don't have, Ross?
He's saying-
441 contracted service, that's not just seasonal. I mean, we have, uh, Egan Excavating comes in and does- Four-forty-one contracted service, that's not just seasonal. I mean, we have Egan Excavating comes in and does our parks, what do you call it?
They pump out the tanks.
Sewage tanks or whatever you might call it. There's a, there's a lot of other things that come out of four-forty-one.
And he's trying to say that if he cuts the contracted services because you had to pay for that last year for the extra seasonal employees, would you cut the, is it okay that if you, you want one or the other? You either want the Parks Service employees to be paid seasonal, or you want to cut the-
I'll clarify.
Does that make sense? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, just to clarify. So, obviously, employees versus contracted services, additional benefits are paid to employees that may not be paid when you're, when you have contracted services. So, I guess that's what I'm asking, if there was a preference of one over the other.
I think what he's saying is, would you rather have our own people instead of contracted?
Well, it's gonna be one or the other anyway. If we don't get the same amount of people, it's gonna be the guys still work, my guys that are working now who were-
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we, if we add those two lines, and I apologize for not clarifying. If we add those two lines, contracted services and parks, or seasonal employment, that's two-hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, that's two-hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars between contracted services and seasonal employees. If you had the same total, two-hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, does the department have a preference if it's in contracted services or seasonal employment? If we're talking the same two-hundred and seventy-five K total?
I'd have to have both. Contracted services really is for contractors that actually come in and do actual work.
Four-forty-one has a lot of uses. We contract out trees that we are unable to-
So, it's a different kind of work?
It is. Seasonal is actually seasonal.
So, it's a different type of, type of work we're talking about?
Right.
It's not just a dollar figure is better over here or over here? Okay.
And then when you compare seasonals to full-timers, the full-timers, we don't have mandatory overtime. So, the majority of my full-timers will stay eight hours and then they're done. That's where the seasonals come in. They'll, they like the overtime to stay and work.
Okay, and the reason I was asking is just to see if the department had a preference to see where that same total, if there was a preference on where the department would prefer that it stays. But you answered my question, thanks.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
I'll just tell you again, David, if you need help, let me know. We still have, working with parolees. On the job I'm on now, they moved me from the U. And they're doing a pretty good job. They've been working with People First and their buildings over there. And they're actually making about seven, forty-seven dollars an hour with them. But if you needed somebody, then call me, we pay them to work in the parks or whatever, pick up garbage, whatever you want them to do. And we pay their salaries and, and their insurance and everything to help you if you need help during the summer, okay?
Gotcha.
All right.
Thank you.
There would be any union issue or anything like that?
As, as long as there's no, as long as all the union members are working? No.
Cool, that's great. All right. One last, one last go around, anybody?
No, thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate everything you do. Brian, you're up. All right, you got the floor.
Did you want to start with any particular department?
Can you tell us about what you do in, about the department and what's going on?
Okay. My name is Brian Thomas. I'm the Commissioner of Urban and Economic Development for the City of Utica. So, I oversee the Department of Urban and Economic Development, which is one of the budgets you have in front of you. I am also, as Commissioner, I also serve as the Executive Director of the Urban Renewal Agency. That's another budget you have in front of you for information purposes. And then I also oversee the Section Eight Department. Crystal Curly's here with me. She's the day-to-day administrator, and that's the third budget you have as part of the overall city budget. In terms of Section Eight and the Urban and Economic Development, there's very little impact to the city's general fund from either of those two budgets. They're strictly based on federal funds. They're received through federal programs. The Section Eight is funded by the Section Eight program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Urban and Economic Development is funded through three federal entitlement programs, including Community Development Block Grant, which is shortened to CDBG, the Home Investment Partnership Program, as well as the Emergency Solutions Program, which funds largely homeless activities. Each of those three programs have an administration line with a maximum cap stipulated by HUD. But those administration lines for those four programs fund those two offices, both Urban and Economic Development, as well as Section Eight. As of yet, Urban and Economic Development, we have not received our allocation notice from HUD. Congress has not yet approved a budget for HUD. It's been lumped in on the continuing resolution. My understanding is that Congress may be close to an agreement on a budget for HUD, in which case, we'd probably find out what our allocation is in thirty to sixty days. We are starting the annual plan process, which is a document that HUD requires for the city to tell HUD exactly how we intend to spend our allocation once we receive it. We have scheduled public hearings, public meetings through the Neighborhood Association process. We'll be at the West Utica and Corn Hill next Tuesday and Wednesday at six o'clock, and then we'll be in East Utica on April first. That's an opportunity for the public to come to those meetings and let me and my department know what the priorities are, what the public thinks the funding, the federal funding should be spent on for the upcoming program year. In terms of urban renewal, this was a difficult budget, and it varied from previous years, largely based on a U.S. Supreme Court ruling recently involving Minnesota, which does actually affect, affect the state of New York. It is going to have an impact on how much we can expect to glean from sales of properties. So, I was incredibly conservative on how much sales would be. The state has, as of yet, has yet to determine how they're going to address the U.S. Supreme Court ruling. But the city is in the process of evaluating what it's going to do.
Can you explain what they're doing?
Basically, in, there was a community in Minnesota, a woman lost her property for back taxes. The community, similar to what the city does, sold her property for a profit, made, sold it for higher than the taxes that were owed. She sued, asking that the, the money that the city realized should actually go to her, and it went all the way up to the Supreme Court. The U.S. Supreme Court agreed with her. So, that's gonna significantly, that has the potential to significantly impact the agency in terms of, in terms of our funding moving forward. So, we're, we're trying to figure out how to deal with that now.
But does that happen often?
Yeah. Yes. Especially in a market like we're experiencing now and an economy like we're experiencing now.
In other words, I'll give you an example, because you taught me a lot of this. So, I mean, you don't pay your taxes. You owe the city ten grand on taxes. We take your house. We sell the house for twenty. We gotta give him, we pay his taxes, we gotta give him the ten grand. So, we're basically-
Acting as a real estate agent for people that don't pay their taxes. And that money, that ten thousand that went to the agency, would generally go back into the neighborhoods that are included in the URA area. For instance, this past year, we, we built a new parking lot on the corner of James and Elm, significantly improving that corner. But we've done other things as well with, with the funding that we have.
A rough idea, how many properties does that have to do, they sell more than what the taxes were?
Virtually all of them.
All right, we'll go around, let's go around there for you. We'll start with Kate, you go ahead.
Yeah, Crystal, I remember a couple months ago, you were telling me how Section Eight, the, the waitlist has gone down significantly, and you guys have just done so much in the past year here, and I was curious if you could recap us on where things are at and if you're still seeing that trajectory.
So, right now, when I came on board in early twenty-twenty-one, our waitlist was probably about five years. Right now, it's probably down to about two years. As you can see in our revenue, HUD is allocating us quite a bit in housing assistance payment income, and we have the goal to spend as much of that housing assistance payment revenue, and then HUD provides, provides us based on our lease-up and what we're spending and provides us more revenue. So, this, this has allowed us, as you could see, we've had significant increases in a lot of our revenue lines. This is allowing us to lease up more of the public. So, we're actually about to be capped, I'm not gonna lie. We're, we're at our max vouchers out there. So, the waiting list will probably, you know, yeah, kind of have a little bit of a halt right now because we've reached our funding limits. We're putting out anywhere between six-hundred and fifty and seven-hundred thousand a month to our local landlords. We've partnered with about six-hundred-plus landlords in contract right now, and, you know, about a population, we serve about probably fourteen-hundred out there. And, you know, it's a really good partnership. It keeps landlords accountable. It keeps our population paying their portion of the rent, and it keeps people housed, so we're in a good place.
Great, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. I, I have a question on, on the urban. What is, down the line, if urban renewals not gonna be making profits on, what's the sense of having it? I mean-
Well, again, we're waiting patiently to see what this, how the state reacts to the Supreme Court ruling. We are also looking at the costs that we incur when we take a property back, from the time we take a property back to the time we sell, because we're looking to take those costs and include them in the equation as monies that we would be reimbursed for out of the sale. There also is talk of a waiver whereby some property owners can sign off on future proceeds. I don't know how much, how likely that is, that a lot of property owners would sign that waiver, but it's, it's out there. So, we're looking at different options.
Well, thank you.
But, but we are concerned about the future sustainability of the agency, absolutely.
And how many homes do you think you'll be selling this year? Do you have an approximation of?
I don't. It's been dropping year to year, which is a good thing. It means more people are paying their taxes. But I believe the next foreclosure round that the Comptroller's Office will be taking is in June. So, I don't, I know there's lists out there, but there's always people to pay at the last minute, so it's tough for me to estimate.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add really quick, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I think it's important to understand the actual mission of the Urban Renewal Board, which, which really, I think Brian can attest to this, is the fact that when we, if, if we eliminate the Urban Renewal Agency Board, I think it's kind of important to remember that everything else will now have to go to city auction. At least with the Urban Renewal Agency, you have that authority to sell with the, with the goal of having owner-occupied homes at mind, or at, you know what I mean? That's, I think the mission of the, of that board is extremely important to the, to the cost benefit of having that. Does it, does that make sense? Yeah, putting families in homes rather than having somebody from New York City or, or Arizona.
Well, I-
I'm sorry, what would you say? What'd you say?
I, I realize that because I, I was on the, the four years. But what I'm saying is, you know, we're, we're getting into running repossession and we're not making the- Well, I understand that, but we're not gonna be making the money we once made.
And I get it, and I think that even if you lose a little bit, the mission of what the Urban Renewal Agency does, I think outweighs that cost.
I think it's great, I do.
But I just, I wanted to point that out, because I think that that's important, because I, I, why I disagree with some of the, the things that the Urban Renewal Agency did, I thought they should invest in homes and rehab them before they sold, and that's part of the reason, you know, when I, when I was on the board, I would have appreciated that. But I think before people start saying, "Let's eliminate the Urban Renewal Agency Board," they might not really understand the mission statement.
That was-
I'm just saying in general. I'm not saying that that's what you-
That was my-
I did not say that that's what he said.
No, that was-
I know that, okay? That's all I was saying is that I just wanted to point out what the mission of the, of the board actually is, because it's important.
No, and I just want to say, it's hard being on the board when you, when you got these fifteen, sixteen qualified families, and it breaks your heart to make that one decision, and you hope everybody comes back. And I just, I love being on the board and I miss it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. So, speaking of the case you're referring to, is there any indication, and I know no law has been enacted yet, is there any indication that the decision would be retroactive before that decision?
Stephanie DeGiorgio from the Corporation Counsel's Office doubts that it'll be retroactive.
So, is there a separate account that the proceeds, let's say, from foreclosures are currently in?
We have been setting them aside, yes.
Okay. Out of curiosity, is it in, which type of interest-bearing account? Is it just in an account just there until a determination by the state is made? Can you speak a little bit to that?
It's there until some determination is made, yes. Whether it's interest-bearing or not, I don't know the details of the account.
Okay. That's all. I appreciate it, thanks.
Brian, you're on.
I see we have a demolitions line. Can you tell me, how much is demolitions? Does the city do those or we?
The city does the demolitions. We have to pay, the city has to still pay tipping fees to dispose of the proper, dispose of the debris. In general, I've, I've been trying to pay for most of the demolitions with Community Development Block Grant funds. Generally, for a single-family, two-family, tipping fees run in the neighborhood of thirty thousand, give or take. You've also got, sometimes they come down, most often, they come down hot, which means they're, they have asbestos in them. So, there are additional fees for air monitoring during the demolition, and then there's usually topsoil we have to pay for to backfill the site once the house is demolished.
Now, private homes that we don't own, the city, when they, when they burn or we, we have to tear them down, do we usually get reimbursed by the, the insurance companies of these?
Yeah, I don't, I don't generally get involved in ones we don't own. That's more engineering, I believe, codes. Marcus might be able to answer that better.
Okay.
We generally, if, if they're insured, I believe we get reimbursed through their, the insurance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, just a couple of things here. I'm looking at line two-sixteen. What is the reason? We're on page one-thirty-nine, okay? What is the reason? So, the actual was zero this year, and we're going to fifty thousand, fifty thousand.
For property acquisition?
Yeah.
You'll recall the Northland Bill, the former Northland Building, right over here across Court Street?
Yeah.
A portion of that was taken through eminent domain.
Right.
With the eminent domain process, the judge gives title pretty quickly, but then it could take several years to negotiate what fair market value is for that property. We're close in terms of negotiations. We've hired Whitman Osterman and Hannah, which is a legal firm out of Albany, to, to handle the negotiations, and we're close. It's probably gonna end up being more than that fifty thousand, but we'll have to dip into our reserve account for whatever.
And what was the, just, just being curious, what was the reason in twenty-four that we had zero, we didn't have, you know, we didn't foresee any issues like that at all?
No, we had no property acquisitions.
Okay. And why, what, going back down to four-twenty-one, four-twenty-two through four-twenty-four, what was, what's the reason for zeros, and then we're going to like two-thousand, two-thousand, what's the, heat, electric, telephone, water? Why are those changing?
I didn't think there was such change.
I just, so, twenty-four, the revised budget is two thousand. The actual, we spent zero, and then we're, we're at the other ones right here. The heat, electric, nothing for telephone, five-hundred for water, and that's it. Those are the two.
I think it's just a nominal amount in case we need it.
Okay. And, you know, you did not, and probably these guys know, but I know from being on the board, that this lawsuit that's going on is basically a replica of what people do, what banks do, and I never realized any of them. So, for banks, if you don't pay your mortgage and the bank takes your house, and you owe them a hundred to ten thousand, and they sold it for one-thirty, they give you the other thirty thousand. So, for them, and the other thing you might want to explain to these guys, how New York State was, a handful of states cooperated, operated the way we did as urban renewal. The other places have been doing what they passed, and so, am I correct?
I believe so. I don't know that for a fact, but I believe so. Yeah, I believe- Yeah, I believe that's what Stephanie indicated.
Yes, that we, so...
But that's what Stephanie expects, how she expects this to go, is that these property sales are gonna be based similar to, as Councilman Beatrice mentioned, how banks currently operate.
I haven't realized that either, that's unbelievable to me, that you could not pay your mortgage, bank takes the house, they sell it at a profit, and you get the money, I mean, that's, that's just great, that's great. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yep.
I just had a question, one that Joe was talking about, that property acquisition, that's totally legal work on that?
Well, it's, it's, I don't think it's legal work, because I think we have, I think we pay the legal work out of contracted services.
Well, that's what I mean, because he kicked it up fifty grand, but yet you show him fifty grand over here, what's that fifty grand for?
Which fifty grand are you talking about?
I'm looking at contracted services under account five-one-four-two-zero-four-four-one. The mayor told us that that was, that was for that particular issue.
Contracted services, he's got nothing.
Yeah, I'm showing nothing in that line.
No, but this is on a, it's a Corporation Counsel line, I'm sorry. But, but you're showing it there, and it's also being shown here on here. So, I'm just wondering, with that fifty thousand, if he's already caught, he already said that that's gonna be covered under this line.
Yeah, but contracted, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead, Joe, listen.
But contracted services on that line is to pay outside lawyers. This is to pay...
That was for a different...
This is actually to pay the seller.
The property owner.
Oh, okay.
The owner who, who we took the property from.
No, that's, that's...
That's the seller, this, this is the seller?
That could be as much as that, it could probably be more than that.
It'll likely be more.
And the lawyer was for a different project?
The lawyer?
That we were talking about.
The lawyer's the guy who pays.
It makes sense why you'd ask that, though.
They can't really say as much, right? All right. All right, thank you.
Just a, sorry, just a couple points of clarification. So, with the property acquisition line, two sixteen, that fifty thousand would be to eventually pay for the property itself, is that right?
No.
Yes, we have to pay the owner from whom we took the property.
And part of four forty-four, legal fees, are the legal fees associated with the acquisition of that property, or is that separate and apart? For example, are the legal fees in...
When you say four forty-four?
Line four forty-four on page one thirty-nine, the twenty-five thousand?
Four forty-four, that's to, that was an agreement several years ago that we would, that we would pay for a portion of Stephanie Georgio's time. Not her specifically, but time out of Corporation Counsel's Office.
So, that's for the city of Utica's attorney, not for outside counsel to purchase the property?
Correct.
Okay.
At one point, we had Joe Obike Senior, that was attorney for the agency. When he passed, we started using Corporation Counsel's.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify the legal fees. And to follow up on Councilman Beatrice's questions, again regarding the case involving the, I think that the Supreme Court ultimately decided was a Fifth Amendment violation. So, has there been any indication that this would end up being a state cost, because it was a state law? So, in other words, this wasn't the city of Utica's local ordinance that was found to be a violation, it was a state of New York law that was found to be a violation. All the municipalities were just following the state laws. Has there been any indication that, that the state might be...
Not that I'm aware of.
No, it is a state, it's happened in Minnesota. It's the government of the United States, right?
Well, he's suggesting because the state allowed this practice to be in place...
It's not like it was a city of Utica ordinance that was found to be in violation, it was a state of New York law.
I haven't heard that, any discussions?
Right, but we don't actually have lawsuits like that in New York State, do you?
No, that's what I'm saying, that there's been no indication that the state's on the hook for this.
No, but I think the point was, Councilman Beatrice, to what you mentioned, that New York is a handful of states that allowed this practice.
Right.
So, it was the state of New York allowing it, not, you know, Utica, New York allowing it.
Right, but the whole thing got overturned by, I don't know, government agency.
You just said Minnesota.
Yeah.
Yes, Supreme Court.
No, Minnesota's where the case went, but, yeah.
No, exactly, I'm just getting, and you hit the nail on the head, I'm getting at the point of...
Is the state on the hook?
Is the state on the hook, not the city of Utica, and that's my question, I appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
For any future cases.
All right, all right. Do we, we good, anybody at the other side?
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, you got anybody else? Thank you. Where Marcus go?
He's the proprietor of the comedy show.
Oh, oh, involved. It's pages, Marcus, we're taking...
Pages, so I think eighty-nine, ninety. And then there's organizational breakdowns, like on page. Yeah, so just eighty-nine, ninety is probably.
All right, have a seat there, Mr. Marcus. Give us a little rundown of what's going on.
So, I gave you guys all handouts, because council people like to look at stuff of just like what our revenues have been. I pulled the reports from my system, so I gave you like seven years going back. This year, challenges will be, we're hiring a new electrical inspector, he should start in the middle of this month. Our old one is retiring. The current position is a part-time position, we're hiring it as a full-time position now going forward. So, that might require more training, he might need, we might need to pay more for training. I didn't put it in the budget, because I wasn't sure who we were gonna get for that position. So, we might have to worry about that. But, look, last year was a record year for revenues, right? We're above most of our averages by a lot. And, you know, that makes us busy. So, I'll take any questions.
Go ahead.
I was looking at the building permits, and I saw that the last three-year average, we've brought in six hundred, sixty-three thousand dollars. And I was just curious, you projected five hundred thousand, do you think six hundred thousand would be a realistic goal to hit for building permits?
So, building permits, to me, are kind of a function of what projects happen in the city. And so, you look into the horizon and you say, hey, this project might happen, this project might happen. Last year, there was Chancellor Park Apartments, there was, no, Olmsted was two years ago. Maybe there was Olmsted, there was Hotel Street, Medical Office Building, so there were some big projects. I think this year coming up, you know, I've heard of some big projects, not sure how close to fruition they are. So, I think it's just gonna depend on how they go. When we get a revenue target, we try to hit it. You can see, when our building permits go down, our other stuff goes up. Because I send codes officers there to try to make sure that all construction taking place is happening with a permit. I send codes officers there to make sure that all the electricity employment is happening with a permit, that we're doing our scheduled twelve oh three inspections, because, you know, I take pride in trying to hit the numbers that are provided to us. So, I think it all comes down to, you know, luck, which projects are being built, how much is the city growing, and, and just administrative priorities, how hard are we trying to hit those fees?
And then, thank you, and then my next question was, we have vacant registry program on the books, and I know you, we've talked about this once before, but what would it require actually for your team to start implementing that?
So, there's two things, I mean, it's administrative priorities and it's, 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 it's union concerns. So, when it first passed, the union concerns are, it's a significant enough addition to their job roles that it would have to be negotiated. So, we're gonna have to compensate them for that. How we compensate them is up to the negotiations, the administration would have to lead those negotiations. And then, it's administrative priorities. I mean, if you take from one area, you give to another area. And if, if, if that's what we do, then that's gonna take up some of their time. So, I think that we could get them all registered, I think it's doable, but I think at this point, it's, is that a priority of the administration? And therefore, can the administration and the union come to an agreement on what the compensation for that would be?
Thank you, I'm all set.
I want to thank you very much for what you do for the city, I, if not anybody else, appreciate it. I do have, I do have a question. Now, when we take and file against a resident, and we have to take them to court, is that called an abatement?
No, so, that's one of the things you'll see, that I kinda have a, the codes department has evolved philosophically over the last few years, is to when our primary mechanism of dealing with people used to be to bring them to city court. An abatement is when we send the parks and DPW departments to clean it up and then put the bill on their taxes. We've shifted from taking people to city court, because we found that to be kinda ineffective, to just clean it up and put it on their taxes, which is an abatement. Now, the issue with that, if you're looking, fair is fair in trade-offs, is that we're taking people away from the Parks Department to do that. So, we could take them to court, but we found the court process takes months. By the time it's resolved, you know, the court takes a fine, the city gets a portion of that, and then there's court administrative fees. And usually, it's like fifty dollars for, you know, something that's been creating a nuisance in the neighborhood for six months. So, it's more effective to abate the stuff, and it's more cost-effective for the city. But it does pull from other departments, so...
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Following up with Councilwoman Aiello's questions regarding the vacant building registration. If a program like that were implemented, based on your experience, do you have a timeline for, you know, including this in a budget to the time it becomes fully implemented and uprunning, and fully implemented and running? Just to get an idea of...
So, I think it's gonna depend on, I mean, I know I run the department, but a lot of that is gonna be how smoothly the negotiations work. How quickly can they come to an agreement with our officers and the union that they're willing to take on this responsibility for what compensation? Is it time off, is it money? So, how long the negotiations work is really it. And then, what priority the mayor, that's who I take direction for, puts vacant housing registry on his list of what he wants codes to do. You know, it makes some sense to me to really, to be able to do that in the winter, the colder months, because that's when, if national grid isn't on, you know, it meets more of the criteria for vacant housing. But that's gonna have to be a discussion inside the administration, I mean...
Okay. Is there any indication at this point, how many buildings in the city of Utica would fit the criteria to fall within the vacant building registration?
There's not, I mean, I, to look at that, we almost gotta go through it and do it.
Fair.
Because there's criteria that each building has to meet. So, I have some ideas, like how many zombie properties there are, how many houses have no power, like I have some ideas. But, it would be premature for me to give you a number without meeting all the specific aspects of the law that it needs to meet.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
I just, thank you for making these, this printout, very helpful. Just a quick thing, so inspections, I'm assuming that's when somebody gets a building permit, they have to have a city plumber, electrician, you go and inspect that, that's what that comes from?
Yeah, so they have to pull a permit to do the work.
Okay.
So, normally, when they pull a permit, we charge a fee for that permit. Those are the summulation of the permit fees. The twelve oh three inspection are the fire safety inspections we do in the court.
But somebody, when they get a permit for electrical, somebody does go and inspect that, right?
Yeah, the electrical inspector, he oversees the whole permit. So, a permit to us isn't just a piece of paper, it's the action in between. So, you say you're gonna build a building, or you're gonna wire a building, we have to approve the plans. Then we have to oversee implementation, and then we have to judge completion.
Okay. And when, like we're always saying, like even in Urban Renewal, that when you, anybody buys a house, they have to have a licensed plumber, electrician. So, I see they have electrical permits, they have no plumbing permits they don't have to get?
No, there's plumbing, plumbing is the second to last one, all the way to the right, next to total.
Oh, okay, I was just looking at the force first, sorry, I missed that, all right, I got you there, okay.
Now, electrical permits, if you notice with electrical permits, in two thousand twenty-two, they went from sixteen to eighty, because he changed the law and updated the fees.
Right.
Plumbing permits, you know, it's been years since the fees were updated. So, they haven't kept pace.
Okay, very helpful, thank you.
Marcus, a couple of things. When Celeste did pass that legislation for the vacant building registry, there was a couple of things that were still in there that weren't worked out in regards to who was implementing it, how it was being implemented, and who was overseeing it. Was there a fee schedule actually attached to that?
There was, I think it's, we would need some legal interpretations on what that fee applies to, but it's basically two hundred and fifty for the first year, five hundred for the second year, a thousand for the third year, the property is vacant. Now, here's a question, right? And we couldn't decide, is it units, is it buildings? So, law would have to interpret that.
Right, and I guess my, my issue is, is that the administration, in the previous administration had, I think, I don't remember when they passed it, but it was like April of, maybe it was, I don't remember the exact date that we passed the legislation, but I'm sure it was well over a year that they had that opportunity to implement that.
Yes.
And they chose not to. So, I think now, having to come to the fact of, you know, trying to, I'm not okay with approving it into the budget for the simple fact that if they weren't able to accomplish it in a year in the prior administration, to make that negotiation with the, with the, with the legislation itself, for the codes department to handle that, or to implement it, I guess, is, you know...
Right. I don't wanna, well, I do want to, because it's, I'll characterize what I was told in the other administration. People might pay it voluntarily. But, if they don't pay it voluntarily, we're not taking the steps to negotiate it, because of those two hurdles I had. Number one, what else you would be taking the codes officers away from? And number two, you're gonna have to pay more to do it. And they didn't think it was worth it. Excuse me?
So, we shouldn't ever pass that?
I said both of those...
There was a couple of things in there that, first of all, I liked the other legislation they had in there for the vacant building registry. I thought that that was kind of an important piece, and I thought that that was something that had been, that could have been handled a little more properly than... That was the vacant building registry, that was actually, there was a couple other municipalities, we worked on that years ago, to do that, and kinda just went to fruition to put it back in. It's in committee, I mean, but that's, it didn't make sense to pass what Celeste had passed. Because, number one, I didn't vote for it, because they just rushed it, it should have never have been passed. Because I don't, I don't even think, even if the administration wanted to implement it, they could at the time. I think that there was just some kinks that even the law department was a little hesitant on.
That's one of the things the mayor had mentioned today, is that we really, we don't know what constitutes right now a vacant.
Well, we've discussed that, though, and that's, so that's not my concern, so much as what's the priority? We can define vacant, right? Like, we're a codes department, we need to do that, and we can figure out how to prove it in court. Now, you know, I'm, as a commissioner, I'll tell you guys, I'm an impose or dispose person. Because it gets confusing when you tell a resident, well, that's on the books, but you don't have to follow it. Like, a real estate agency will call me and say, "Do you have a vacant housing registry?" Well, yeah, but there's nothing we're gonna do to collect the fine from you. So, if you're gonna impose it, impose it, if you're gonna dispose it, dispose it, that would be the clarity that we want. But, we did the same thing with convenience stores. It's, we didn't, we didn't enforce it for a year and a half, and then all of a sudden, we're enforcing it, and it's my job to administer it. I mean, that's, that becomes...
That's all I'm saying, is that if, the year and a half, if this was something that was feasible, I think that the previous administration would have implemented it too. So, I think that if you include that into your fee schedule, that you have to bring the legislation back and actually go through some kinks in order for this to even be thought of as a process for a revenue generator.
And you have to, and I don't, I don't mean to tell you guys how to do your job, and you have to account for the fact that the guys aren't gonna do it without compensation.
Well, I think that that was probably the biggest argument that we had too, on top of that, was because how did we, how did we do something like that? You know, and I think that that was...
Right.
Those were all the questions, and like I said, that got passed not without these questions being answered, so that's, that's...
Right.
That was some of the things that it's gotta come back.
The same questions exist.
Right.
Thank you.
I wanted to add something about, so, the city of Schenectady does abandoned and vacant property fee. The lines that they have collected for in the past three years was four hundred and ninety thousand, over two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. This year, they're projecting four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, in about three years, they hit a million dollars with abandoned and vacant property fees. That's where I think the money, whatever the cost is, I think, well, we would likely profit off of this, and it would be a great revenue source for the city, and ideally motivate people to get these properties in use. Looking at your department versus everybody else's, there is no overtime, there is no extra ways to make money. And in all these other departments, I hear the DPW, there are people who like the overtime option. Would this, do your people want more?
Yeah, I mean, so, that's my favorite question, and I say it, and council people don't like to hear, because like, I get it, like even administration people, it's like, we wanna add more, because we want more services to the city. But my problem is retention, because it takes a year to train somebody. And they're really specialized... because it takes a year to train somebody. And they're, they're really specialized careers in, in what we pay. You know, we're starting people off at twenty-nine thousand dollars a year. And it's like, everybody in my department, so I got sixteen people in my department, including myself, one just left, so I got fifteen now. I, I can only think of two that don't have second jobs. Eight of them have three jobs, because I was going over this today. Like, at some point, you know, we're willing to, to, to work or do more to earn money. But my biggest concern as a supervisor is like, you have to pay people a living wage because it impacts the quality of employee I have. When people have two and three jobs, like, that sounds good, they work hard, but they're bartenders, and they're up till two in the morning, and then they come to work at eight o'clock the next day, and they're tired. And like, at some point, you have to look at codes, if, if you're going to say codes is part of public safety, you have to look at it like it's part of public safety.
And I'd add also, how many, how many languages are in the department? You guys have like interpreters, I feel like, built in that is a.
Well, that's just, yeah, that's, that's just one of the things.
I mean, I was in the middle of my budget question, so if I interrupted anybody else, I mean, I would have been hung twenty minutes ago.
Sorry, I was given a floor, that's what I thought we had.
No, I don't know.
No, I wasn't done. No, because you didn't go yet. So I wasn't done. You know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'll ask, whoever asks me a question, I'll answer.
So I was, I was literally in the middle of asking you the question in regards to this vacant registry. So even before, even before we go back to the fact of whether or not that this is something that could be implemented, I think that it needs to be implemented before we use it as a, as a revenue source, especially knowing that our budget was running last year at a one-point-nine million dollar deficit, if not more. That's the only thing that I was going to say to that. The other question that I have is in regards to these, this fee summary. All right, and you gave the three-year averages, and, and, you know, again, you know, I think that going back and looking through the past two years, three years for COVID, I think that that was some of the best times that we, as a municipality, would see, you know, number one, things being added, whether you were adding buildings, whether you were adding, you know, fixing up stuff, because people were given a lot of money. The city was given a lot of money, the city went and threw a lot of those things. So I think even using your last three-year averages is kind of a little tight, adding another hundred, what is it, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the budget, and is that, was that, what was the, the amendment for that? How much was it?
Hundred thousand for building permits.
So an extra hundred thousand dollars in building permit, using those last three-year averages. Now, if you want to go back to prior years in COVID, I don't know what those are, because I had, I just got this fee summary scheduled, that would make sense, kind of get to the average, because I think that there were, we're leaning off, not only with sales tax revenue, we're, we're, we're coming down on that decline of really the, the investment and things that need to happen throughout the city. So I, I thought that if you wanted to add, and, and this was kind of my thought process amendment that I had, is maybe if you were going to increase those building permits and wanted to add that extra hundred thousand dollars, that would make sense. But to use the last three averages, the last three-year averages on building permits and, and electrical fees and, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever you have in here, made sense if, if we were still on that incline to, to receive that revenue compared to those last three years.
So two points to, to what you said, just quickly. Number one, I propose five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand for what?
For building permits.
Oh, okay. But I thought that you gave the, I thought that you gave the fee, and you just said, when the question was asked, that you would be okay with it being increased by a hundred thousand.
No, I didn't say it was okay. I said, it's, it depends on luck and, and what our priorities are, and I'll do my best. I mean, I put five hundred thousand dollars as my estimate.
Right. So that's what you, as the department, had, working with your, your.
Right. It depends on what projects land. And then, now, I just want to keep up, because what you, what you were saying about COVID, what we saw in COVID, and I just think this is interesting and, and nerdy and whatever, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, which was two years ago, was the really low year we saw from COVID.
That's twenty-two, twenty-three, right. But now, you're not talking about nineteen twenty.
Right, right.
You know, to increase that, those first two years.
Yeah, yeah. But I just think this is interesting. It doesn't contradict what you said at all. I think what happened with COVID is we saw a gap between when the old projects were completed, that happened during and before COVID, and then the new projects were started. And we had that year where we didn't collect a lot of building permits because COVID had stopped a lot of the planning of those projects.
Right, but you saw those high increases was through those, through those, through those first couple of years that you were able to get back into those things. I mean, I think even the city investing sixty-four million dollars in a lot of those contracts, whenever, we don't have that revenue coming in.
A hundred percent.
I agree with your five hundred thousand dollar assessment. If you didn't, if, maybe even an extra hundred thousand dollars into those building permits, if you increase those fees on the, on those permits.
If you increase the fees. Now, look at seven and eight, so two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, you look at accessories. Those are home improvements. Those have gone up to record numbers. A lot of that is because of residential rehab program.
Yeah.
So investing ARPA money did boost those numbers.
To, to the extent that we don't need to continue to increase those revenues, knowing that we might not possibly get them in a budget year, that we're, we've seen deficits in past years.
That's a projection, yeah.
Yes, right. So that's, that's, I just wanted to touch on that. The other thing is, is that who is your union representative?
My union representative?
For your, for the codes department.
So CSEA.
CSEA. So who's our union rep?
The president of CSEA locally is Steve Price.
Okay.
I think the vice president is Robin Rotondo, and the, the regional president is Mike Nessie.
So I think that even, you know, moving forward, even before you could even talk about those, I think that knowing that that's, that the union has been, you know, a part of an issue of trying to implement these things, knowing that your guys are going to get more with less, that that's something that needs to be negotiated before you can even expect to get anything from that. I think it's an important, it's an important thing that I wanted to add to that.
And it's also important to, I mean, I don't know if this is over my bounds, but the council can't negotiate it. It's, it's going to be an administrative.
I'm well aware of what our powers are.
No, that's what I'm saying. So, so, so you can say, hey, I set this money aside, but.
And like I said, I think that if the previous administration, who didn't veto that piece, was able to negotiate that and include it, we could possibly have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue from that building, or from that, you know, budget line in regards to the vacant registry. That is it. That's it. Thank you.
Everybody good?
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else?
I just wanted to add, I guess when we're talking about these potential revenue sources, I think we should be aggressive on them, because when we're talking about a year with sixteen point five percent tax increase, that's where my, it's not really a Marcus thing. But yeah, it's, I think it's just as a council, and hopefully administration, we prioritize that we're collecting all the revenue that we pass weekend for the taxpayers, so it doesn't come out of their pocket. That's where I stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is that it? All right, tomorrow.
You got it, you got it adjourned?
Yeah, hang on. Just wanted to knock down the seat. Tomorrow, we have revenue, H&R Benefits, Civil Service, IT, Assessor, youth, police, mayor, and I guess we could always ask the engineer.
What about golf commission? There's nobody showed up tonight.
Say again?
Said we were supposed to have golf tonight, too.
Yeah, I don't see anybody.
And, and, mayors, do you guys want to take five minutes and ask any questions?
Any, any questions on engineering?
That you could write, somebody could dictate it, send them an email? I mean, or you want to do it tomorrow? We can do it tomorrow.
I think if you have any questions, go ahead and email the, the mayor.
Oh, I thought he wanted to say I have one email.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. See y'all tomorrow. Take care, be smart.